Response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Accordingly, due to health and safety concerns as well as a stay-at-home order issued by county judge. This meeting is being conducted by video conference. The time is now 7:01 PM. Board members present Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, and myself Rhonda Newhouse. Absent, we have Captain Doll Davis. I would like to ask everyone to mute their microphones unless speaking to. Thank you. Our next item is the superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to begin by recognizing Superintendent of Schools Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and all the trustees. It's great to see you all this evening. As I said last week, it seems like we're seeing each other almost every week. And so I get somewhat confused sometimes of what announcements I've told you and what announcements I haven't. But we are excited tonight and we're going to be coming forward with some agenda items that we've talked with you all about on this past Thursday. And you've given a lot of feedback and insight into the work that we're doing with teachers. But more importantly, the work that we do in terms of compensating our teachers. In addition to that, tonight, we are excited to be celebrating some students. We know that just this past year, you all decided to join the Mexican-American School Boards Association. And based upon you all's leadership, we're going to be extremely excited to award some scholarships that you all have played a very instrumental role in joining the organization for us to achieve. And so we definitely thank you for your sacrifice of volunteerism. But more importantly, making sure that you all represent all segments of our student population and demographics. And so we appreciate that from you. And so at this time, we do know that we had a very successful virtual graduation this past Saturday. We knew that it would be somewhat different, but as I saw one of the previews and watched them on Saturday, it was amazing to see how the virtual graduation turned out. So many thanks to our school leadership office for the work that they've done, as well as our communications department for the work that they did. We know there was a lot of work on all parts of our organization to make sure that they came off without a hitch. And so I think our parents, the feedback that I've received from parents, they were pleased with the virtual graduation. And as you know, this weekend, we'll have our face-to-face graduation. And I know it's going to be pretty hot out there, so we're going to have to make sure that we take care of ourselves and hydrate with our cap and gowns on. And last but not least, I will say that it was so nice seeing all of our students and to receive the support from our mayor last Friday night for the graduation ceremony. If any of you have the opportunity to see it on the news, Channel 2 in particular did a really good job showcasing our district and our students. And more importantly, the work that the mayor has done to celebrate the graduates this year. This does conclude my announcements, and I'll turn back over to you, Ms. Newhouse.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Next, I'd like to ask any trustee if you would like to make some remarks.
Well, I'd like to
Trustee
Compliment you, President Newhouse.
Gonzalez.
Because I would like Oh, sorry. Jana, did you want to go ahead? Okay. President Newhouse, each time
Go right ahead, Dr. Jensen.
About a meeting or a presentation of car, that sort of thing. I understand that you're out there giving wonderful remarks. I think you're a brave lady as well as a dedicated one. Thank you for doing that. But I did want to follow up with Dr. Watson's comments as well. I was surprised at how much I enjoyed the virtual graduation. And the reason why is it's really hard to hear people's speeches in that auditorium at the Berry Center. And I got to hear in detail the principals, Dr. Watsons, the valedictorians and salutatorians. And it was just really nice. And I'm just hoping that in future years, we retain this as an addition to the in-person graduation.
This is trustee Gonzalez. I wanted to mention the event we had this Sunday with the Smart Kid Cool Car event. It was exciting to see as many students come out and experience that. The young lady that won was so excited and just really deserving of that honor. So you guys did a, Spring ISD did a great job of recognizing those students. And we want to thank Honda of Spring for putting that together. They're a great business partner and we truly appreciate it. And again, I'm glad we were able to go through with that event, even though we had the COVID-19 going on. So great job, Spring ISD did a wonderful job with that.
Madam President, this is trustee Durant. And I'd like to take a minute to speak to the Friday night event that we had with the mayor attended. It was a fantastic event. And one of the things that I enjoyed was watching the kids having an opportunity to interact with their friends that they haven't had a chance to see. It was really fun to see them doing the line dancing together on the football field and just watch them enjoy themselves. I want to thank all of the communication team and everyone that helped to make that such a successful event. And so we've got a lot going on, but despite the challenges that we're facing in our country today, I'm very proud of how Spring ISD is moving forward and still meeting the needs of our students. So kudos to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durant. I will continue to echo you and Dr. Jensen and Jana. Our district is doing a wonderful job. That community and engagement department is just awesome and the activities they're coming up with for our students. On Friday night, Dr. Jensen, it gave us an opportunity to see how we're going to social distance for our graduations. Because they had all of the students laid out on the field, six feet apart. And they had squares for them to stand in. So there was social distancing at that event that we could get a chance to see how it can work for graduation. And then on Sunday, at the Cool Car, Jana, wouldn't you agree that it was so much fun, even though the students were in their cars? So we were still following social distance rules and the horn blowing and the parents there too cheering students on. I know it took a lot of effort and organization and work there, but you guys did a great job. And it was just nice to see our district celebrating our class of 2020. So thank you there.
Madam President, in the same vein, I wanted to commend the faculty and staff at Robertson Middle School. I had the opportunity with my daughter to create a float out of our car and drive through the line with hundreds of other parents, proud parents, for her to graduate from eighth grade. And again, these are difficult times and it's hard to know what to do. But I just want to give kudos to the creativity and the commitment to the students that I saw from Principal Walker and her staff. It was very well done. And I appreciate the yard sign. And so I just want to put that out there and echo what you're saying about the great job we're doing of keeping things as normal as possible under very difficult circumstances.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our next item, which I'm happy to present. And that is that our Mexican-American School Board Association Scholarship Presentation. Think I mentioned to you earlier in the year that we had a few lucky students to get that scholarship. And we're so proud of them. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief Innovation Equity Officer, Dr. Lupita Hannah-Hosa.
Thank you, President Newhouse, members of the board, Dr. Watson and Cabinet. Yes, absolutely. Tonight, this evening, we are recognizing our scholarship winners from the Mexican-American School Board Association. And just really excited for our board to have joined this association. It's a historic association that started back during the civil rights movement back in 1970 in San Antonio with then the superintendent, Dr. Jose Carvenas. And all that civil rights movement has come a long way for us to be able to recognize our students. And tonight, Ms. Newhouse, we are recognizing three winners from our high schools. Yes, we're very, very excited. And I actually, we have some counselors and sponsors out in the field to help you and help all of us recognize our scholarship winners. They will be receiving a certificate from Maspa as well as their scholarship. And then that cord, that red, green, and white, verde, blanco, y rojo cord that they will wear at graduation. So I am going to start first and foremost with Spring High School. Ms. Kathy Cole is our National Honor Society sponsor, who is at the home of Olguer Carache. And I know I saw Olguer. Let's unmute your mic, Olguer. And Olguer is actually at Spring High School. He is number three in his class. I see some green balloons there. So we're very excited for Olguer. He is actually also one of our Emerge students, was in the band. He will actually be attending the University of Chicago and his major is pre-med. And we're very excited. I see the balloons there. Olguer, congratulations. Ms. Cole, if you'll give him his cords and his scholarship. All right, congratulations, Olguer. And next, we have another winner, also from Spring High School. And I see Ms. Gerard. She's at the door knocking right now. I see her waving and she's got a cord. And she is at the home of Kayla Oregón. Kayla, congratulations. Kayla is going, she's also a senior at Spring High School. And she will be going to the University of Texas at San Antonio. And she wants to major in neuroscience, wants to study medicine, pre-med. I see her there. She is the first in her family to go to the university. She's been the class president, an avid swimmer, and she works part-time at Michael's. We had to get her the night off so she could be able to receive this award. Congratulations, Kayla. And I see Ms. Gerard putting the cord on Kayla now. So we're very proud. And our next winner, our third winner, comes from Westfield High School. And that is Natalie Beneathus. And Mr. Williams, he's our senior counselor. I know he's on the phone somewhere. Is there to present Natalie Beneathus, her scholarship. And Natalie will be going, staying here local. She will be going to Houston Baptist University. And her major will be in nursing. She graduated, will graduate magna cum laude. She's got her dedicated service cords. She was also in the band. She's the first generation student from a single-parent home. She's the youngest of three. And Ms. Lauderdale calls her her quiet child. And so we're very excited and congratulate Natalie Beneathus. Congratulations. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and to the board for your support. Your support of our students and this great opportunity that presents them. As you can see, all of them going to major universities and I know will do us all proud. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. And students, please don't leave because I'd like to give you a moment to say something about your award and your future endeavors. Let me also congratulate Olguer on winning the Rhonda Newhouse Scholarship from the Spring Foundation. Congratulations, sir, to you. So two honors to you tonight. But each of you, I would like for you to just take a moment
Hello.
Share a few words with us.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Yes, before we start, may I go ahead and do the presentation for Olguer?
Please.
I have here, we finally got the technical problem solved.
Please, please.
On behalf of the board, Mexican-American School Board Association, I'd like to present this award to Olguer Carache. He is my student at National Honor Society. He's graduating number three in our class. It's a very competitive class at Spring High School. Here's your check from the association. You have a cord. The colors of the cord are green or hope, white for purity, and red for the blood of the people who stood ahead of you. So you can stand where you stand today, a success. And we would like to congratulate you on behalf of Spring ISD School Board with this Mexican-American School Board Association Award.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Feel free to give us a few words, Olguer.
Excuse me? Oh. I got a Florida Rice Scholarship to the University of Chicago. And I'm working to study foreign languages, global studies, and public policy while I'm there.
You're going to be a world changer, Olguer?
Yes, ma'am, I will. I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We know that you will. There's Kayla. Are your parents there?
Excuse me? Yes, my mother's right here. And then my dad is right here.
Congratulations.
We were a little off guard. I didn't expect any, you know, the police officer and this told a couple of years ago. Yeah, I was like, why are the cops stopping here? I mean, I don't know if I did anything wrong.
We're here to support you.
We'd like to thank our officer for being generous and helping me.
Thank you once again.
Wonderful, wonderful. You're welcome. And now Kayla. Kayla, please share a few words with us about your future endeavors. Is she muted?
Kayla, we can't hear you. It looks like you're not muted, but for some reason, we're not able to get the audio in. While Kayla does that, I think we have Natalie in the attendee list. I'm going to promote her to panelist real quick and just verify that that is her.
Please do.
Kayla, I think we can read now. We can see you in the other.
Looked like she's muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to receive this scholarship and being a nominee. And thank you to my student council sponsor for being there with me through my senior year, also my mother. If it wasn't for her, I most likely would not be where I am today because she did push me throughout my entire education career. And I will be attending the University of Texas at San Antonio and I will be enrolling in the pre-med program. And then my goal is to transfer over to UT eventually and study neuroscience and get my degree, my BSM for nursing, and then Bachelor of Medicine.
Congratulations, Kayla.
Thank you.
Will we get Natalie back on?
All righty. Natalie, are you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you all. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, congratulations. Please share a few words with us about your future endeavors.
I'm very thankful for this and I'm very happy that my whole family is here with me right now. I sure wasn't expecting this. And I'm really excited to start attending HBU and like go towards my dream of being, majoring in nursing. So I'm just really excited.
Where's your family? Put them on.
All here.
Congratulations, family. Again, congratulations to you and your family, Natalie.
Thank you. Thank you.
And again, Kayla and Olguer, all three of you, we are very proud of you. Thank you. Keep up the hard works and next year, we look forward to hearing back from you on how well things are going for you. Thank you. And thank you to our counselors and our fantastic police department for getting them over there safely and sharing this with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, y'all.
Hannah, we appreciate your bringing that to us.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, and thank you to the entire board.
Even through this pandemic, we are still celebrating and enjoying each other's success. Especially for our students.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move the students over to attendees so that they can continue their celebration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Executive Chief of District Operations, Mark Miranda.
Hi, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the board. We're going to talk about and have the board action on the 2019-2020 Miss School Day waiver due to COVID-19. There have been several waivers that we've been required to do by TEA for COVID-19 purposes. This one requires an attestation by the board. So on May 5th, 2020, the commissioner announced the districts and charter schools that closed due to COVID-19 are eligible to apply for a Miss School Day waiver for any of the scheduled instructional days missed from March 16th until the end of the school district's last day of school. This Miss School Day waiver is for all days that the district was closed, closed preparing for instruction, and closed instructing. So even though we were closed instructing, the Miss School Day waiver still applies. So the Miss School Day waiver must provide the days by listing the first day and the last consecutive day. So we have really a few groupings of that. And you see on the board item that the groupings are that Spring ISD was closed from March 16th, 2020, through April 9th, 2020. Those were consecutive days and then we have the spring holiday. So the next grouping starts with April 13th, 2020, to May 22nd, 2020. And again, then we had Memorial Day holiday. And we pick up again from May 26th through June 2nd, 2020. So there's a total of 55 missed school days that translate into 24,200 missed minutes. And we'll be applying for the Miss School Day waiver through the districts, through, I'm sorry, through TEA system. And the board will be, once approved, assigning the attestation for this purpose. Any questions?
Just one comment, since we were required not to have school. It's interesting that then we have to apply for a waiver for those missed days. But I guess that's the way government goes sometimes.
Well, we agree.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miranda. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the missed days, Miss School Day waiver for days missed due to COVID-19.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the Miss School Day waiver for days missed due to COVID-19.
I second that. It's been moved by Deborah Jensen and seconded by Justine Durant that the Board of Trustees approve the Miss School Day waiver for days missed due to COVID-19. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I will now poll the board members for their vote to approve the Miss School Day waiver for days missed due to COVID-19. Winford Adams Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant. Jana Gonzalez.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, votes aye. So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Miranda. As we continue tonight, our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Human Resources and Human Capital Accountability, Dr. Julie Hill.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Watson and trustees. I've come this evening to remind us about some of the details of our District of Innovation Plan that we have. You know, throughout this entire pandemic time, there have been a lot of things that we don't know, that we don't know. And the silver lining and surprise has been around our District of Innovation Plan. While we passed it back in 2017, it is relevant today for some things that we've experienced now and will continue to experience in the future that we had no idea about. So I do believe that you received the document, but I'm going to see if I can share my screen real quick. Okay, can you, can you see the plan?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So I want to just take us back for a few moments, back to the very beginning. So TEA, the Texas Education Agency, in 2016 developed a detailed comprehensive plan that would allow school districts to receive some exemptions from certain provisions of the Texas Education Code in order for, in an effort to be very innovative in terms of instruction and in terms of the school structures that they would have in their buildings. So Spring ISD, over a three-month period in 2017, came to the board and asked if, in fact, we could pursue becoming a District of Innovation and submit a District of Innovation plan. And we thank you very much for allowing us to do that. And some of our board members even participated on the committee with us. Trustee Newhouse and trustee Durant and Dr. Jensen also participated with us. So they were a part of this document that we developed back in 2017. So by law, the district is mandated to keep a copy of our District of Innovation Plan on the website. And we do have a District of Innovation website and the plan is posted there along with the history that tracks exactly how we got to the development of our plan. And we do have a District of Innovation website and the plan is posted there along with the history that tracks exactly how we got to the development of our plan. So as we go through the plan this evening, as you can see, it starts off with telling us what the key important dates were that were part of our work there and a listing of all of the different district individuals that participated with us to help us, in fact, to get through with the plan. And the plan lasts for five years, as you can see here on the page, bottom of page three. And so our District of Innovation Plan will be good through the 2021-2022 school year. Unlike many districts that may not have had a strategic plan or didn't really see how to connect it, we had a strategic plan already and we developed our District of Innovation Plan to align and to complement what we were already seeking to do through every Child 2020. And of course, as you can see, our vision, our mission, our guiding principles and core values, all are what we built our whole plan upon. And so the first seven pages of the plan here really go to how did we make sure that our strategic plan would be enhanced in terms of its implementation with our District of Innovation? Here on page seven, I'm sorry, page six, we have a crosswalk that shows you exactly how every element that we could cross from the Texas Education Code, Chapter 12A, which is the District of Innovation provisions, then ties back to our strategic plan. And so you can see here, we delineated and marked through so that you can see exactly where any of the exemptions, any of their sections, parallel to what we already had in our strategic plan. So I want to take you through this, a couple of pages, and I want to start on page eight because I really want to talk about some of the exemptions that we have that are so invaluable to the work that we've been doing in the past several months and the work that we will continue to do as we move forward and we continue our virtual instruction. The first thing I want you to, to look at with me on page eight is the first exemption that we asked for, which was the one that deals with what some commonly refer to as the 90% seat time. Basically, it, it has to do with whether or not a student will receive credit or receive a grade for the amount of time that they are actually physically in a course or in a class when it's offered. And so at that time, we had no idea how innovative what we wrote really was because for each of the exemptions that we asked for, we have to tell them exactly which section it is. From the, the Section 12 of the Texas Education Code, we have to tell them what the current law says and then we have to tell them what we believe the benefits of the exemption would be to Spring ISD. And so when we looked at the benefit of this particular exemption, it was amazing to us as we looked back as the, as the administration to see that we really were living the exemption. So when we looked here, we could see that the strategies that we were trying to achieve, support teaching through technology practice, expand team and project-based learning opportunities, create interactive learning environments, and foster cross-cultural competencies. All sounds like what we've been doing in the, over this past spring and what we have planned for next year for our students. And then to make sure that we could do that, we wanted to make sure that they had innovative opportunities that went beyond the seats in their classrooms. We wanted to make sure that we gave them not only opportunities for internships and mentorships, but blended learning, virtual instruction, project-based learning and experiences that did not have to conform to the 90% seat time, which is exactly what we did in the past several months and will continue to do. Describe that the flexibility that we gained through this exemption would allow us to continue as the district to create real-life learning experiences outside of the traditional classroom, that vary in structure, location, and time. Now, we couldn't have figured that out if we wanted to, but we have been living the dream. So that is just great. We're really excited about that. I also want to call your attention to the next exemption that we asked for, which was in terms of staff development. And so this one, I know that you realize we've been using for the past couple of years, this particular exemption, the law initially said that all of your professional development had to be campus-based. But if you recall, a couple of years ago, we started our district-wide professional development sessions. And this is the exemption that allowed us to do that. This past spring, as we were working through our remote learning, Chief Bradford and her team were really working with teachers not just beyond the, the district-wide learning, but they were learning virtually all over the place and teachers would join in from all the different campuses and they were able to come in and learn about the project-based learning that they were going to deliver to students. The teachers on all the different campuses were meeting with their principals several times throughout the week. They were meeting with their teachers, their teacher fellows, every day. So they were having a chance to go across the campus, across grade levels, across their teams. And so the collaboration was very high in terms of the staff development that emerged from what our recent experiences are. And I know that Chief Bradford and our team are working on even greater things for this summer in terms of the professional development for our teachers and as we launch into the fall. So I can't wait to see what they have for us next. I also want to call your attention to another exemption that we have on page 12. And that particular exemption has to do with modifications to planning and prep time. And as you recall, in the past couple of years, we've had, for several years, we had a focus on working in professional learning communities, PLCs. But we've really done a deep dive for the past couple of years where we've built structures in every single school to maximize the amount of time that teachers are able to work together in their PLCs. And so to that end, this particular exemption is how we were able to do that because the current law really said that planning and prep time could only happen while kids were receiving instruction. And we asked for that exemption to make sure that we could use time before the, the very beginning of classroom learning started as well as at the end of the day after classroom learning was over, we could still use that time for teachers to have for planning and prep. And this is the exemption that gave that to us. That exemption really allowed us to be more flexible in terms of the master schedules that schools were able to create and really allow videotaping, the at-bats that you heard teachers talking about the past couple of years. I mean, we could just, we expanded and were really able to do even more than we realized when we first asked for this exemption. And we were able to continue that with the work that we've done this spring. Really allowing teachers to learn to provide instruction in a whole different way from really doing full-time, remote learning for our students. And so, you know, we've really been able to get in more learning than we possibly could have if we were just sitting in the, our regular brick-and-mortar buildings. And then I just wanted to call your attention to this last page. One of the last exemptions that we also took was a modification for, from the first day of instruction and the last day of instruction. And so as you recall, the last time that we were together and we worked at looking at our instructional calendar and you were able to approve that for us, the intercessional calendar. This really allowed us, this is the exemption that let us do what other districts were not able to do. It was with ease that we were able to put that plan in and able to bring it straight to you for a vote because we already had a District of Innovation Plan that said we could vary our first day of instruction and our last day of instruction in Spring ISD. So we wanted to just, I guess, bring it all together and tie it up with a bow for you to know that the forward-thinking of the board and of the administrators and the teachers and the principals that all work together for our District of Innovation Plan is really paying dividends for us and, and we'll be able to use it and leverage it with the next couple of years that we still have left as well. So we just wanted to make sure that we broadly were able to make sure that there's an understanding of what we're doing now in terms of the different scenarios that Chief Oldfield talked with you that we were going through and that we're planning for, that we're gonna be bringing back to you very soon. And all of it ties into what we're able to do through our District of Innovation Plan. Any questions? Well, that just means I was crystal clear then, if there are no questions.
Your presentation brings back some memories of our committee meetings.
Yeah, I was gonna comment. I was gonna comment, my goodness, I'd love to take credit, but I think a lot of other very brilliant people in our district put together most of that plan and your forward-thinking is just awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President and trustees.
Thank you. It looks like we are right on time with our innovations. Thank you, thank you. I'd like to continue tonight's meeting and recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westbrooks.
Thank you, President Newhouse and members of the board. Good evening. Based upon the results of the TASV salary study that was conducted and has been discussed over the last several weeks, we are coming to you all this evening seeking your approval of the teacher pay schedule for the 2020-21 school year to assist with the recruitment efforts that are already well underway. And the pay increase that we're, we're seeking approval for this evening would be a 2.5% general pay increase and it would have a starting teacher salary of $56,500. And as was discussed at the board meeting on Thursday evening, this would assist with recruiting, also with retaining our teachers and will help pose, that put the district in a more competitive position and close the gap in comparison to many of our surrounding districts. So again, we're seeking the board's approval to move forward with the teacher pay schedule for the 2021 school year that has a starting salary of $56,500. And this would be supported by the 2021 budget, which will be presented to the board at the June 23rd public hearing.
Any comments, questions, anyone? Hearing none, I know we discussed this in our work session this past Thursday and that was a very good presentation, Ms. Westbrooks. So we were quite pleased with that presentation. And with that, I will now entertain a motion for the Board of Trustees to approve the increase in teacher pay for the 2021 school year as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the increase in teacher pay for the 2021 school year as presented by the administration.
Trustee Hodges, I second.
It has been moved by Winford Adams, Jr., seconded by Kelly Hodges, that the Board of Trustees approve the increase in teacher pay for the 2021 school year as presented by the administration. I will now poll the board members for their vote to approve the increase in teacher pay for the 2021 school year as presented by the administration. Winford Adams, Jr.?
Aye.
Kelly Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
And Jenna Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you. And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, vote aye. So the motion carries unanimously here. And we will note in our minutes that Captain Davis is absent today. Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. So as I indicated earlier, we had a very thorough meeting on Thursday night in the work session and we covered a lot of the items that were presented in our consent agenda. So I would now like to entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's consent agenda.
Trustee Hodges, I second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Kelly Hodges, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I will now poll the board members for their vote to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Winford Adams, Jr.?
Aye.
Kelly Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, vote aye. So the motion carries unanimously. And again, with the absentee of Donald Davis, we will put that in the record. Okay, for tonight, we do have a closed session. So the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized. Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer and/or employee. And the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.076, to consider the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 7:47 PM. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 8:30 PM. We will address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board render a final order to terminate the contract of Nina Hayden as presented in closed session and authorize the superintendent to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Do I have a second?
Trustee Hodges, I second.
It has been moved by Winford Adams and seconded by Kelly Hodges that the board render a final order to terminate the contract of Nina Hayden as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent to provide notice to the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I will now poll the board members for their vote on this item. Winford Adams?
Aye.
Kelly Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, aye. The motion carries unanimously and again, we will note that Captain Davis is one absent. Are there any other motions? Hearing none. There are no other items on tonight's agenda. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move to adjourn this, tonight's meeting.
Second. Do I have a second?
Trustee Hodges, I second.
It has been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Kelly Hodges, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. I will now poll the board members for their vote to adjourn this meeting. Winford Adams, Jr.?
Aye.
Kelly Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Jenna Gonzalez?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, aye. The motion carries unanimously, unanimously. There is no further business. So this meeting is officially adjourned at 8:33 PM.